I'm gonna call for some help.
Later, later, later. Later. It is 4:30.
Okay. I'm gonna call Health and Recreation Committee meeting to order. Thank you everybody for being here. We have two items on the agenda. Update on summer park programs that Mr. Masay is gonna tell us a little bit about. And funding for youth recreation programs, which is a topic that has come up at our meetings, at our council meetings. So, does Billy need to go up there on this meeting in terms of...
Well, the microphone's here.
Yeah, okay, so you'll have to go up there and speak. So... So, basically, I wanted to hear, wanted us all to be able to hear what's going on, positive and negative, this summer in the park in terms of some of the incidents that are happening, but also the program that you're running, which I really picked up today.
It started today.
So, why don't you start, maybe start there?
Our program started today. All our youth showed up. They were in all four parks. The temperature's a little low because of the weather today, you know, heat and stuff. So, we've had a few kids, I think we had like eight or 10 at Steinman's, maybe 10 or 15 at Central Park. So, it was pretty good. The kids are, you know, pretty excited about it, but there's like, there's no kids here today. I'm like, well, there's a food advisory meeting today, so you might not see too many kids. When you see an empty playground at Central Park, that's a cue right there that we're not gonna see some kids today. I thought it was pretty smooth the first couple hours that I was out there with the kids. I traveled to the parks. So, it looks like we're gonna be successful soon. We've got a really good bunch of kids that are excited about doing what they're doing.
That's great. And orientation went well for them, through the training that you did with them?
Yep, it happened last Monday. We had 42 out of 44 kids showed up for orientation. The other two that didn't show up were on vacation. They notified me before then. So, we went through, you know, what conduct was expected, and we gave them their shirts and stuff, and how they should conduct themselves in the park.
Yeah, that sounds great. I did get a question today about how are you advertising and promoting programs that are happening in the four parks? Which started today. I mean, I understand it started today.
Just our basic, we went out on the mayor's site, it's on our city's site, and what's happened for the council meeting, so we haven't really done anything to put it out there. Tremendous.
I wonder, so we didn't go through the school district at all?
The school district, yeah, I did go through the school district when we advertised and stuff that went out. It's also, it's on, I believe the Sycamore or...
Oh, Sycamore.
Anyway, sorry, it's on, they have all those flyers out there and stuff, so it's all, it's out there.
I think part of the summer meals kickoff that I think both of us attended, they had the flyer, and the flyer did have some stuff on there.
I think once we get through this weekend, the word is out, the lunch program started now, the lunch program will very likely attend it today, too. I think in a little bit of time, we'll build that momentum that we're looking for.
Okay. So, how many youth staff are even in each park? You said it's four parks, so how many staff were in?
It varies from park, I think.
Oh, okay.
I've got, I think, eight or 10 in Central Park, I'm not sure enough.
Okay.
So, I got, it varies. It depends what activities you're involved in that I set up in the parks.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you. Hi. Yeah, I mean, I think that we probably all have other resources if you want. I mean, if there's more flyers about the programs, that we all could, you know, stick flyers in other places, like I'm thinking, you know, the meals that get given out at some of the sites as well. Not just at our parks, but, you know, like at St. Louis at the pantry, in other words, when people come. So, if you want some assistance with that, you know, let us know.
Yeah, we'd have to get some flyers made for that. Some of the people that we ran into today, we're gonna tell their friends, their family and stuff, because they thought it was really great, we have some kids playing soccer with some people we have up in Central Park. So, I think it's gonna take a little bit for, to catch the community that what's going on. Like I said, I watched the lunch program today, it was very likely attended in all the parks I went to. It wasn't tremendous, so...
Yeah, first day.
I don't know if it's the first days out there, or if it's the weather today.
Hi, I didn't even see you. Didn't see you coming. I think that also one of the other things, just in, you might be able to help me clarify this, but with, I know that the school district has had an increase in summer school programs, too, and they feed the students, you know, at their schools as well, so I think that might have affected some of the meal program, at least last year, the attendance, that kind of thing. So, I don't know if we're gonna be able to do that again this year.
In the school district, they're not a good partner. They did some advertising out there for us. They really came outboard, helped us with a lot of stuff. I spoke to Dr. Kedley last week, and she said that they were telling the parents that are in the summer program there about our programs in the parks, so they are getting the word out, too.
So, it's two summer programs right now. There's Cade Elementary School, there's the program at St. Ray's School, so those would be good ways to kinda get the work out. We could do that, and then your 24th Century program, that's gonna be for your middle high school students. However, we don't know what's happening with federal government can really impact our ability to deliver that, so possibly...
Hi, Joe. Okay. I was thinking, maybe also, maybe we could do a press release or something into the community notes, I had the Gazette as well, about the, you know, the parks programming. Yep, I can help with that, too. Okay, other questions about that, but can we talk a little bit about some of the incidents that have happened?
Well, my question isn't exactly about that, but sort of, anyway, here it is. I know that in prior years, we had, like, I know you're doing a lot, so thank you for covering all that. I know that in prior years, that we had a Recreation Advisory Committee, so I guess this question's more for you, Ms. Patrick. Is that something we're looking at to try and bring back? So, I didn't, I only have only heard, well, good things about the programming that we're doing, but I have had heard some concerns about other things that are in the park that are not being addressed in terms of, like, benches and things like that, things that aren't really for youth to do. So, but those were things that were identified, kind of this kind of thing?
Yeah, I have to speak, well, I have to speak with the mayor, but I also have to speak with Richard Attorney, who has been chairperson of Recreation Advisory Committee. We lost several members. It hasn't really been in, we haven't brought it together recently, so I do, it is on my list of things that has to have to get taken care of.
We just addressed the benches in Central Park. We had to paint them, okay? We had all the benches painted around Central Park.
It was the Central Park.
Okay. He and I have benches that are going in down Riverside.
It was Riverside.
It was Riverside. They brought them up. We have some benches that are up in Ward, not happening in the three months, so we're looking to get them in. We just have to get the masons set up and put them in down there.
But, so my point was, those were things that the Recreation Advisory Committee, what they did was group people, including residents, went around to all the parks, and they saw the need, so that that kind of alleviates you having to, you know, hear all that. So, I thought it was a good committee, and made some really good, identified some things that maybe we as, you know, from this side don't see because they're residents and because they do live near the parks.
I just wanna also point out that when Bill started, he also did do, because that was in 2018 that they went around to all of our parks?
I don't remember the last year. It was a while ago.
It was 2018. And like I said, I mean, we've lost pretty much most of the committee, has either moved or that kind of thing, so we're not as connected. But Billy did that kind of assessment of all of our parks.
Yeah, I did a big survey when I first came out last October. I went around, identified deficiencies in the park, all, and replaced all the swings. We got most of the swings replaced. We identified the problem with the secondary quarter, Jerry Barrows, spoke to the mayor and that quarter, we managed to get it done before the broad casting starts, that's gonna repair. We have some issues with fences that are tremendous, that's a big real problem, at 10th Avenue, a few other places where the fences are all living, there are trees that are growing up, so they need replacement, but a significant amount of money in place on that end.
All right. So, update of, you know, some of the stuff that's happened recently?
It's unfortunate, we've had some incidences at the pool where we've had some bad behavior by younger adults there, which we've talked to Chief Puffer and Chief Oryge, we put a different security plan in place. It's unfortunate that some children just go there and they just can't behave. I mean, it's really tough on our lifeguards, you know, we're there to control order, and kids just don't wanna behave. When they're told you can't do that, you can't approach people in the pool, you can't throw people in the pool, and some kids just don't take kindly when they're told they have to leave. That behavior's not acceptable.
And the sign that's posted says all those things that you're saying right now?
Absolutely, absolutely. The rules are clearly posted. There's rules that we went over back when I was here in March, that we put up, the signs are clearly posted up there. We actually have flyers that we hand out to talk about the residency. On the flip side, it has all the rules, regulations of the pool.
Are they typically with adult guardians?
No, we're seeing a lot of 13, 14, 15-year-olds where the problem seems to be on the perimeter. That's what it seems to be coming out of.
The mayor's supposed to have a new company?
That was changed. I bought that up, 15-year-old, shithead adult, it was dropped to 10 and under, even back, when we got back in March, when I had conducted interviews back in the old time with Boys and Girls Clubs, focused on their lifeguards, they identified that the teenagers seemed to be the problem.
So, how is it dropping it to 10 helping the problem?
It's not.
Okay. I, so I mean, should that be revisited?
I think we're a little late in the year right now, because our signs are up, and we have to change it. I think it's something that, you know, when the pool closes at the end of the year, we should do an evaluation of what our problems were, and how do we address them again? You know, I don't know what the issue is with the 15-year-olds, but they seem to be a problem. The teenagers definitely seem to be a problem, and it seems like there's a poor group of them that show up every day at a certain time, so we've been trying to address them and tell them that the behavior's unacceptable.
Then what you read, what happens then? If there's, like, I know, I understand there was an incident yesterday, it was pretty significant, and so what happens to that individual?
Well, he's been removed, he's banned from the pool and banned from the parks. You lose your privilege, he's our pool. You know, it's a privilege, he's our pool. You go in and you violate that privilege by conducting yourself, and the lifeguard says, "Stop roughhousing, stop throwing the girls in the pool." You have to obey that. And this kid didn't wanna obey him. When the lifeguard addressed him again, he got very aggressive with the lifeguard.
Mr. Williams?
Has there been any partnerships with some local organizations? I know oftentimes, we were talking about the school district, and getting kids to present on time, not to say we've ever paid here in the city, but they're like a dad's about a son, right? I'm thinking, like, could we have some, like, adults from the communities fill in? And I would volunteer myself also, but I know we have some organizations like the WCP, Lead One Voters, I think we have the support in there if the offer was extended, because, correct me if I'm wrong, it's just lifeguards and then the presence from the police department, there's no other adult or senior.
We have a school safety team there, who could just assist us tremendously with the ID, with the Infinite Campus, it's worked really great, how we're flowing the kids through, but we don't wanna put them in harm's way either, you know? They identify several troublemakers, they kinda help out a little bit, but...
Putting in harm's way, I mean, it might resonate different, if you see, like, oh, this is my friend's parent here, and then there might even be an intentionality to, like, I'll step in so that this isn't something negatively impacting all of the kids, because I imagine having to present with the police department, that changes the theme of the rule.
I'm not sure about that. I see that some kids are very aggressive there, I wouldn't wanna put someone that's not law enforcement in harm's way, you know? I mean, we've been, we have instituted policies where we remove the people from the pool, we actually did bag checks on them now, because we've had alcohol coming in and stuff, so we're bag checking now for bottles and cans and stuff. We instituted a re-entry policy, where you can't just come in and say, "I was in," you have to get back in line again and come through, because one of the things we've noticed is we're getting a tremendous push at the door. People are trying to get in, people are coming, say, "I was in," and just flaps your hand up and push through, push your way through, so we instituted a policy to try to control that a little bit.
No, I was just saying, last season, myself and other school staff members were going to the pool, in hopes to kinda just, like, have that relationship with the kid, and so I think that the school safety team has been there. How are we collecting that data, as far as, like, okay, how many incidents do we, are we doing, like, something like an incident report when somebody...
If we call the police, an incident report is not.
Okay, but not, but only if it reaches that level?
Well, if you cause a problem in the pool, they highlight your name, because they have your ID, they know who you are, they'll get highlighting, we know who they are, we've addressed them, they'll come back, so listen, you have a problem, they're gonna say, "If this behavior continues, we're gonna remove you from the pool." So, not formal, but loosey, loosey.
I would say, just a suggestion would be that even if it doesn't reach the height, because I think there's a lot of daylight between, hey, you're forcing around, and we have to call law enforcement, well, at least there should be, there should be more graduated[1643.02][1643.12]interventions. If you could have, like, something where there would be like a incident report that, you know, hey, car, you were misbehaving in the pool, this day, this time, this is what your reported thing was, behavior, so we don't want you doing that behavior, because I just think that we also, we wanna balance the, wanna operationalize that as much as we can, so it's not at the discretion of, you know, because you have different people in different positions at different times.
One of the problems, Julie from Boys and Girls is running, it's, "What's your name? I'm not telling you my name." You know, then we have to try to figure out who you are, we have you logged in, or most of the kids, some of the guards, some of the regulars are, and then we have to figure out what their names are. Some people won't give you names, like, yesterday, we knew people's name.
Yeah, so I think that, I mean, so, one of those things that's so foreign, incidents that we can't have something to be, we do an incident report.
Yeah, well, you said, that's somewhere I can work on with Boys and Girls, if they do something like that, the one way.
I just wanna say that I do support having a police there, especially right now, the beginning of the season, I think it could be a deterrent to some of our behavior, hopefully. But I think that we have to keep in mind that we really need to make sure that the safety of the children that are using the pool, and the safety of our staff, our 42 high school students, you know, to me, that's been sort of the primary piece that I've been talking to Billy about, in terms of, you know, I really wanna make sure that safety is, you know, we keep people as safe as we possibly can. And it's unfortunate that right now, we've got to have, you know, the police there again, but I personally feel that it's a deterrent, and it's necessary so that people don't get injured. I'm gonna, Mr. Williams, and then Ms. Portfield, but then I'm gonna switch the topic, because we don't have a lot of time left. Well, actually, am I wrong? Wait a minute. Or the bug? I'm sorry, we do have time, but, sorry, I kept thinking 5:00, but it's 5:30, so...
And just as a point of clarification, I wasn't saying that we should not have the police present or available, I agree with that 1,000%. I've seen some of these kids, and definitely that is, sometimes the interventions require more than a hug, or a...
We're still in talking talks right here.
But, to Mr. Farlow's point, there may be some, just prior conversations that might resonate different hearing it from someone that, you know, you see at church or at the grocery market every week. So, I'm just saying that I still feel that that could be an additional resource. So just saying that I still feel that that could be an additional resource. And with this being our second year, so I think the community needs to give us some grace as well. But looking at what our options are, definitely our perspective is being more responsive.
The school safety team has been really good because they've diffused some minor situations because they know the kids. They know who they are. They went over and they've talked to the kids and they've diffused it. It's just certain kids, it's hard to get to them. But the school safety team has worked out really good for a lot of the young kids out.
So my question has to do, you said this young person would not identify themselves. I was there with you the other day when they were going through. I thought that you knew, you took ID from the adults. And then the young people went over to the school safety person and said, I'm.
Right. When you have 700 people there, it's hard to remember everybody.
Okay, oh, there's no way, there's no.
He's logged in. When you have to, when you, once you come past the original checkpoint there, you have to log in again. But then you had to figure out, when did he come in? What was his name? You know, it's a.
So it's not like he's like identified by like, you took his ID and you're holding on to it?
No.
Okay.
So I'm going to move us on, but I just want to, last thing to say that again, the fact is that we did talk, you know, it's going to be good for us at the end of the season to be able to look over the whole season and evaluate and, you know, see what kind of what we're going to change or do the same for next year. So I appreciate it.
No, we've looked at, I've been talking to staff, that we've looked at one of the things, like we said, our entry point becomes very clogged with people coming in, people coming out. It's very convoluted to how people are moving around the floor. We need a, we need a different way to flow the people in and flow people back out on reentry. So that we're going to look at some way to come up with.
So the X on our hand doesn't count any longer?
Yes, no, this one, we change it every day.
Today's a different day.
They've figured out what color Sharpies we're using and they've used the Sharpie. So we go to different color Sharpies and we use a face or we'll use a Z, we'll use something, it'll be the code of the day.
Yeah, it's different.
I wish I was that smart.
Well, we noticed it because we, one day we were using a Sharpie, big flat Sharpie, big flat X's. And all of a sudden we started seeing kids come up with little tiny X's. Where did these come from? They must have run down a Sharpie. We go, let's, I go, give me that Sharpie, let me see. We had a big flat X on my hand. I'm like, where are they getting the little ones from? So they were.
What would be the?
So they could get it.
So they could just like, wait, they didn't have to wait. I'm in already, I'm going ahead.
Okay, so next topic, thank you. Next topic is about the funds for youth sports programs. We had, you know, we already did actually give some funding to Belmont Pop Warner. We've gotten a request from Hockey League, they were for self-add-on. So I wanted to have, at least get the ball rolling, no pun intended, but at least get the conversation started, let's say, in terms of whether we were going to start in some way helping to fund some of the youth sports programs. And I'm going to say upfront that I will stick by my original statement from our committee that I think that if we're going to do something, I think it would need to be done in the 2026 budget process rather than just being able, just trying to do it now in the middle of, in the middle of budget year. And I also will say that one of the, you know, we did take the up to $25,000 from the allotment that we had made using ARPA funding to Coco House. So today Coco House did, late in the day, we got an email that showed how they expect to spend the rest of the allocation that we had given them. So kind of that's where we're at. But I mean, actually, do you have an opinion about this or can really just even sit down and join the rest of us?
No, the only organization that I'm really involved with that's outside of that is right here, that happened today. The Skills Camp is happening. We do that in conjunction with the Schenectady Old Timers Baseball. They go out, raise the money. We supply the field. We probably, we let them play on our field. I'm with their camp on our field. They actually raise money from outside sources. And if your child comes to our camp, that camp, they will write a $75 check for your registration fee to Schenectady Little League. This organization's been doing this for, since 2019, just before pandemic they started, which is really good. They just have a lot of good dedicated old men that get out there, use their connections in the community and get it funded. And I think do a good job with the kids. They give them the grab bag at the end of the thing. They give them shirts, they give them hats. That's basically the only one I've ever been involved with. The other organizations are involved with the Blue Jays, but we charge the Blue Jays to use our fields. Schenectady Blue Jays pay us to play.
And most of our sports teams raise their own funds, as we talked about with Belmont Pop Warner. They raise their own funds.
Yeah, the Blue Jays do their own fundraising. They have a golf tournament, they do car washes, a bunch of other stuff. They do, they raise their own funds.
Well, so thank you very much. Please stay. But I think we do have at hand a request from the Hockey League, which I think we have that attached to our materials. Everybody had a chance to look at it. So why don't we start there? Because we do have to deal with this one request. Does anybody have an opinion or comment? Mr. Williams?
I had an initial comment. I was slightly confused by your first comment. Do you not support this? Because it's, as you, as the person presenting that agenda.
Right, because I, I put it on, I asked to put it on the agenda. But it's not that I necessarily supported. It was just that I had to have it, I wanted to have a discussion about it and make a decision.
Okay, so I'm going to continue on. I feel like it's a bigger conversation and it clearly identifies itself as a county program at a minimum. So then I think I just wanted to add more clarification because I think it'd be inappropriate of us to designate city funds for county resources.
I, that's, so we have one person that's saying essentially no to this request or any support?
That's not what I'm saying. I'm saying if we're going to be intentional with supporting our youth sports within the city, making sure that is the focus of our dollars. Whereas this, again, throughout the conference, throughout the email, highlights itself as a county program, wanting to make sure that there's a clear designation to what kids were referencing, especially where designated city, city dollars.
I see what you're saying. And I actually would say that I think that if we were, when we get to the point of talking about 2026, if this was something that we thought we wanted to do, not just hockey, I mean, you know, have a pot of money that was support Schenectady Youth Sports, that then we would have to have criteria, we'd have to have an application process, we'd have to have, you know, parameters around it. So yes, I mean, one of the criteria would certainly be, you know, city sports. I think, am I hearing me correctly now? Any other comments? Mr. Mancini?
I wonder if it's something we can look at maybe strategically around like data of maybe like youth offenses where they're being considered at what times, what recreational programs we have, we have or don't have in those areas. Like when, you know, we had a lot of different after-school programming. I have the Rock Program. Growing up, I was at Elm Ratten. We had like basketball. And just gave a look at that data and what we have and what we don't have, to maybe have conversations with the counties and schools. Here are some deficits in these areas. We're seeing high rates of incidents, but there's really nothing available at that time. And as we've mentioned, one of the major risk factors is unstructured free time. And so we look at those areas and maybe kind of determine what would work there for those young people, kind of do a cost analysis and how, what we can realistically do, what the county may be going to do and what the city school district may be willing to do.
Other, Ms. Toro?
I kind of agree with that, Mr. Mancini, as far as like after-school intramuros. I mean, I think the school district should, I don't know what programs they offer. Wondering if they shouldn't step up to the plate with, with after-school basketball, football, flag football, which is huge, all of these sports that parents have to support. And I'm wondering, you know, and different organizations need to reach out and have fundraisers. And it's a lot, it's a lot on parents and children participating in each sport. So I would like for, you know, some of the children to have the opportunity to stay after school and participate in these sports. I don't even know if they have intramuros sports any longer they did when I was growing up. As far as, you know, I was not in favor at all of funding any type of youth sport out of our budget. Moving forward, we may be able to include a little bit more money on the line and have almost like the yearly scholarship, not scholarship, but yearly.
A grant?
Yearly grant, where these outside sports organizations can write a grant and, you know, we have maybe the recreational advisory committee look over them to see who could get that funding that year. And then every three years, you know, they could reapply for this grant. But in front of us is another ask for 20 or 25,000 dollars. I just, you know, I know that they use the county ice skating rink. I believe that's the only one that that's there. They did use Union College, it says in there, but now they're using the county rink, just like Belmont Pop Warner uses a city field. So they're using a county field, but it does say in here that there's lots of city, city individuals who unfortunately can't afford the, the cost. And there's also entry level of hockey programs, but they also, let's see, it says, learn to skate has become a thriving program with students from Schenectady City School District as well as other school districts. So there are a lot of city, city students that would benefit from. I'd like to hear more about this and perhaps have the individual come and put something more how they would plan to use the 25,000 dollars. Again, if it's to all city residents for, you know, people to sign up, registration, you know, I think that we opened up the door for other youth organizations. So here it is.
Ms. Fordville?
Well, I looked up this group. It has, as stated before, they're in Scotia and in Glendale. So, and there already is a rink in Glendale that they're using. And I don't equate it necessarily to, to what we've done previously because we didn't, we took that, it was ARPA money, so it's not like we went into our, our regular budget, which is what's being proposed going forward. And I would have liked to hear more as well because are we really serving, are we really serving city of Schenectady students? And then the question becomes like, like it came from town, Belmont Pop Warner, where does the money come from? That was, that was the question you had. Where does the money come from? And so, and also in this letter that this person wrote, they said they were, became aware that we were, that monetary funds are now available. I'd love to know how they became, what they're saying.
To answer that, this came almost immediately after there was an article in the Gazette that we had given money to Belmont Pop Warner. So I think that's what they're referring to.
Oh, well, I'll ask them a question if they ever, if they ever come. But so this is really to expand their mission, not to do more that, not to do what they're currently doing. So they're saying, my interpretation of what they're saying is that we would like to expand it to include Schenectady city residents, not necessarily doing it right now. This is to expand it is what they said in their statement.
Mr. Mancini?
That program started in the city of Schenectady in the hockey arena for J Street. And when we could not afford it, the building was closed down and they moved with the use on the ice at Union College. County stepped up and picked up the tab at the arena. It's up by the airport.
So the county picked up the tab? And I guess I'm, I'd like, I said, if the county picked up the tab, I guess I'm not clear why they're coming to us if the tab, if the county's already putting their bill.
They built the facility.
Yeah, and just renovated it. Right.
They built the facility.
Yeah, what about the students going there? Because that's what we'd have to cover. We're not, they're not asking us to cover those costs.
I don't know. It's starting here, the city kids.
But is that?
J Street.
And, but is that still what, I remember when there, when there was a rink on J Street, but is that still who they're serving considering, but because often, not always, but often, when we are trying to talk about getting kids to different things, transportation is one of the issues that come up. So I'd like to know if in fact they are really serving students or youth from the city of Schenectady.
I think that if we wanted to, we could see if they wanted to come and make a presentation to us. I think it really, I, it seems like, you know, for example, the large skate program. In other words, if we, if we, if we were thinking about giving them any funding at all, I think we would want it to be your city residents. So they'd have to figure out, you know, how they track that. But I think for me, so handling this, there's two issues. Handling this request right now, at least getting back to them with some sort of response to this request. And then the larger issue of what do we do moving forward as we planned before, you know, sort of the overall umbrella of, you know, whether it's Blue Jays, whether it's cricket, whether it's soccer, whether it's 3D love, you know, all the various sports in terms of whether we're going to, you know, figure something out moving forward or not. I mean, so, Mr. Toro?
Thank you. So I would say the larger piece is something that, you know, we've been kind of talking about. I've been bringing it up since our last budget Sunday. So I would say that I think we need to make these investments into our youth. And I would like the conversation to shift a little bit just from youth sports to where the pro-social activities for youth. There's students that want to participate in, and kids in the city that might want to participate in, you know, different things that aren't necessarily sports related. However, they still have all the same protective factors and all the good life lessons of sports. So I'd like, I'd like to have that conversation be a little more broad than just sports so we could be a little more inclusive in youth and youth and kids. I think that changing our youth, what's now, I think, is employment, is youth employment line in the budget as I was identifying. I think to a youth services line would be, would help us in that and so we can be a little more expansive in our support. But I also think that, you know, these conversations and us recognizing the ability to leverage that investment that we're making in our youth, I think is really important. So I'm definitely open to the conversation. I would like to see us operationalize this in our coming budget where we fund it a little more adequately and we aren't so restrictive in our language to where it can, where kids who want to participate in other type of programs, we could be a support to that. And I also think it's important to recognize like earlier in those conversations like, well, Belmont, Belmont does do their own fundraising, has done their own fundraising for 15 years. Yeah, so you know, it's, it's definitely not, they weren't looking to the city to just help with their, to sustain them. I think that they've been, they have a proven track record of being able to go out and fundraise. And I think that the city benefits greatly from that investment. Again, so that's, I think we should make it more general. I love us tracking the data, but we should also make it so it's not just around youth sport, but it's pro-social activities.
I'm going to jump in there. I think, I hear what you're saying. I think we still would be, I think moving forward, I still like the, that the youth employment line. And then if we were going to, this having a youth services line that would encompass the, not just recreational, but recreational, social, educational, and that is unfortunately, it's like, we have to take a call. But part of his summer program is not just going to be recreational, but therefore be like, you know, arts and crafts component, you know, those kinds of things. So I still feel like, again, through the Parks Department and through our director that we could get a recommendation and get, you know, build that program under the auspices of the Parks Department. It doesn't have to necessarily all take place at our parks, but you know what I'm saying? Like if there's going to be somebody overseeing and helping to pitch a recommendation, that to me right now would be a logical, a logical place for that to, to come from. And I like the idea of trying to have that funding. I mean, I think we're going to have to, you know, figure out how we do that because we know we're going to be going into a budget year that's going to be kind of tight. know we're going to be going into a budget year that's going to be kind of tight, but I think it's really important as well that we have some opportunities available for kids to learn from. Other, Mr. Carle?
To Mr. Carle's point, I mean, there's a lot of, I think, city residents, children who want to participate in things outside of sports, whether it's literacy, reading, drama, things like that. And again, going back to the school district, you know, what can be done to put those programs in place so that, you know, children can enjoy whatever their aspirations may need to be, whether it's, you know, Taekwondo, you know, not a good parent to afford to send a student to, you know, karate, Taekwondo, dance, ballet, all those things that are so important to youth, especially when you have friends who might be participating in it and you can't participate in it yourself. So, and those are things I, I don't think the city should be responsible for, I think it helps in some way, again, going into a budget season that's tight, but again, what can we do for these youth to keep their minds dreaming always?
I guess, oh, let me just say, I do want to say that I think, I keep coming back in my head, I keep coming to the word sponsorship, right? So if we were, in other words, to what extent, and I mean, this is a large discussion, you know, just getting, getting started here, but to what extent can the city be a sponsor the way that we are, you know, we might be involved in other kinds of things moving forward if there were, if, if that was really the kind of thing of giving some funding. But I still feel like we also need some sort of process or some sort of, whether it's coming from development, whether it's coming from the Development Harmony, or whether it's coming from Parks Department, there still needs to be some sort of, you know, an application, you know, how do we make those decisions? Mr. Carle?
So to you.
Sorry, Ms. Corrigan was next, sorry, and then Mr. Carle, sorry.
Well, I just, if we're, if we're, if we're talking about giving money, I don't think that the individual sponsorships is something that we need, a road that we need to go down. You know, at this point in time, there's an organization that came and asked, I understand that, and another organization is coming to ask, but for us to say, you know, my child wants to take Taekwondo and then can you, can you do that? I don't think that that's something that we can do. Individual sponsorships, that if an organization comes forward, then that's, that's different. I'm not saying that, that we should, you know, make a whole budget line for that, that's not what I'm saying. I'm simply saying if there is a budget line, that we have to make sure that what we're doing is looking at organizations as opposed to, you know, individual.
I was just going to say that, you know, since our last conversation around Belmont,
which I thought was a pretty strenuous process, more strenuous than I would like it to be, I've reached out to some local nonprofits and trying to work with them around creating kind of like that youth sports and pro-social activity kind of scholarship model to where, you know, it doesn't have to necessarily be only a, a city sponsor, for lack of a better term, but I also think that city do need to step up and have some investment, to have some skin in the game here because we're, we're looking around and seeing like some not-so-good things happening with some of our youth and then that ends up actually coming at a cost to public safety and it can end up being a cost to the city, so, and I also don't want to just hone in on that very preventative from like the criminology point of view of it, if you will. I also think that when we're investing our kids, not only will it like help with public safety, but it also, we have some brilliant, amazing kids that are contributing members to our city and to our society and when we invest in them, we get that huge return on investment. So though there might be a really direct line to keeping kids out of trouble, which I am all for, is which I'm such a strong advocate for this, it's just important that we also recognize with strength-based approach, the, how that, how they pour back into the city as well. So it's definitely an investment more than it's just a cost.
And the only thing I'd add in alignment with that is, I think to Mr. Toro's point earlier about what's the role of the city with respect to youth sports, I think the role of local government needs to continue to be responsive, which is a word that's been shared on the table tonight. And I think what we're recognizing is it needs to be introduced into early and earlier facets of our residents and our youth, our residents within the city's management. I think we heard a lot of phraseology around community policing, what does that look like? We put all the onus on the police department to address and respond to mental health and physical altercations or issues presenting. I think also as we hear the tone of community schools, which was presented to us by Superintendent Solair and has been adopted by Superintendent Coto, that is how we combine work on these issues and not put all the responsibility or onus on families in the school district when there's so much other lives, as we've heard about from Mr. Masika, that they don't have those opportunities to practice these social skills, which we assume or which have been taught to us in different mechanisms. It's how we respond to living in 2025 in there. So I think it requires different mechanisms to be used in different ways. I think that's an appropriate discussion. We have to evolve as our nation continues to evolve and I think part of the conversation is where are the implications of some radical changes that we are anticipating the outcomes of.
Yeah, I mean, I think I got to attend, I think we all were, but I'm, as you are, the Community Sports Advisory Committee, I think you're, you're on that as well, Mr. Williams, and Dr. Coto recently had a meeting where he brought together folks from different organizations, nonprofits, I mean, he put up sort of a general call to anybody that was interested in, you know, kind of being a part of the conversation. So he's definitely, I think we all know, looking to gather as many community partners as possible around everything that we're talking about here. So, you know, maybe ask Dr. Coto if he'd like to come to another meeting as well and update us with some of the things that they're doing, but, you know, I think all of us, I think somebody was saying similar things around partnerships, you know, with the city being a vibrant partner as well. Do you want to have anything to, in this conversation? Mr. Mancini, if you have a chance to weigh in on this part of the conversation.
No, I, I agree with what's been said and I don't know if the Recharge Schenectady Initiative includes, you know, youth focus and maybe that could be a way to help develop and for the city around positive development activities.
That's a very good suggestion.
Ability facets.
They are doing that.
They do, they're dedicating these kind of, you know, committee, if you will.
Oh, okay.
It would be great to hear their voice, what their interests are.
And unfortunately, Ms. Carver couldn't join us today here, but she's obviously interested also in the community, but so. All right, well, let's try to figure out though what we're going to do with this. I want to be able to get back to Mr. Uche around the hockey piece. So I think it's, it does seem as though it's very county oriented if you read this, so.
I'm wondering, I mean, can you ask if, you know, how many city youth participate in this, if they could, well, use money for the registration, like what we're doing? I, I don't know.
Well, I think, I think that's a first step, and I'm happy to get back to her and ask a few questions, you know, and I could even have her come in and talk to us all on my information, where she comes in and answers questions specifically, but that might drag it out a little bit, but.
With registration, they have to be able to know how many are actually city residents. I just keep reading this one part about the Learn to Skate program.
Yeah, that, me too.
Students from Schenectady City School District. I know my granddaughter's been invited by several children that skate out at the county rink for birthday parties and they go to school with her, but they skate in Schenectady youth hockey. So I, I do know that there are youth resident hockey players that skate, but again, it's again, something else. I mean, as far as transportation, I think transportation is an issue for all of us to get to places, no matter where they need to go, whether it's Glendale, Central Park, the North Side, so maybe.
So get, get numbers, numbers of city residents that are involved in the programs that they're running? Is that, is that sort of a summary of what you're sort of saying?
What I'm saying is.
Other thoughts on this? Or, I'm sorry, what did you say?
And I'm wondering what, what the, now that the Union College rink is closed, it'll be, I did read something that they will be having some ice time down in the new rink.
The new rink?
Yes, but unfortunately the price has gone up, so do we, do we help out with ice time?
Well, they're telling us, this particular email, they're telling us what they're trying to do if we gave them twenty thousand dollars.
I remember when we were talking about funding the arena down here in Harvard, one of the things that was really clear, and I, and I feel like I had a dream, council members expressed this, is that, you know, we're supporting that in a way with the expectation for our kids, and I live in our community, to have access to different programming, shows and opportunities, et cetera, that's going to be down there. So I think that, you know, I know it's been some time since we've had those conversations, but I'm sure that, and I could reach back, in fact I will, I'll reach back out to just, you know, to give some, some more information on how, we're going to make sure that that happens because that was part of the, a major part of the calculations for myself is that our kids would, especially our underserved youthful marginalized communities would have access to things that are happening there, so.
And when is hockey season? I don't know when it begins.
I, I think they do.
How, how it works.
I think they do earlier also, but I'm not sure.
Well, I mean, we think, but I don't know. So I'd like to know, like, what, what are we talking about in terms of time frames?
Well, I can just reach out for more information, or we could invite her to come in and speak, what are people's pleasure.
I'm fine with hearing it, if you want to reach out, it's, I'm fine.
Okay, all right. Anything else for recreation? Okay, then I'll take a motion to adjourn. This is for a second. That's right, I'll second it. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, we're adjourned.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for coming.
That's a little here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
I'm trying to sort of, you could be out of line, but I'm trying to sort of.
Probably.
Probably.
He's on fire.
He's on fire.
He's on fire.
He can't even pass the needle, right?
He can jump over.
Oh, I get the introductions. Those are just the contracts you've settled, so it's now a paid retro, so it's the only one.
I'd like to call to order, I'd like to call the orders to connect the city council committee meeting for Monday, July 7th, 2025. The first committee is finance, Mr. Mutiveren.
Thank you. The first item is CSEA 2025 budget reappropriation. Derek is not here, that's Jim McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Both item one and item two are adjustments to the contractual obligations that have been agreed to by the city, and we have paid the retro amounts that were negotiated in those contracts. And so this is to make the actual budget adjustments to those lines. Those are detailed, and I don't know what number of pages are here. Three and four in my package, so if people have a specific question on it, or.
Any questions? Go ahead, please.
So my question is presented around, are any of these positions vacant? And then if so, are they currently being advertised?
Present was a question I'd like your finance commissioner to respond to.
Within CSEA, we do have some vacant positions. This is adjusting based on the budget, and yes, all the positions are advertised. And the operating engineers, I apologize, I can't type, there's one vacancy there, that's fully staffed. Thank you.
Any other question on item one? Say now, we have a motion to move item one forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Item number two, operating engineer, 2025 budget reappropriation. Any thoughts on that?
Same scenario.
I'm in the special. Go ahead, please.
I'd say along those lines of your previous comment about all the positions are filled and assigned, are there any intentional steps, and this is just me kind of preempting conversations in a month or so regarding the budget, to increase that number to perhaps two?
Sorry, I had trouble hearing the end of your question.
Oh, sorry about that. So you're quick earlier about the, all the positions were fully allocated, and that you were referencing to me.
This reflects what is in the adapted budget. So we can't, we don't take something and say it's not filled, or whatever. The number of positions in the budget multiplied by the contractual raises are reflected in those numbers.
Gotcha.
In the upcoming budget, so the program of the council whether to increase, decrease those positions. I'll make a recommendation to you the first of October.
Any other question? Say now, we have a motion to move this item forward.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a motion to adjourn finance committee.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
At this time, I would like to call for our government operations. We have two items on the agenda, the first one being the city hall parking lot, Maxine.
Thank you. This is a license agreement to support efficient downtown parking and sharing of cost of paving improvements. Mr. David Hogan Camp on Metroplex. We hear no further.
Hi, good evening, everyone, David Hogan Camp. Here, Metroplex has administered this lot, downtown parking system, since around 2008. We've had a license agreement in the past, happy to see the improvements being made. Some of those parcels belong to Metroplex or licensed by Metroplex. We're looking to enter into an ongoing license agreement, renew our past license agreement, where we'll cover the ongoing, we'll cover our portion of the improvements, and we'll continue with our winter and summer maintenance, and plowing, landscaping at the lot, and just continue to keep it nice and clean as part of the overall parking system. Any questions, just let me know.
Yes, so I read through the contract, and I did have a question regarding the item number three, which is improvements. So this contract would commence, because everything moves forward on the 14th of July. However, the improvements that are talked about in item number three have already been done. And I know that we're right now accepting the money back from Metroplex to cover their portion of it. I just want this language to reflect that this part has already been done, so that it doesn't, it doesn't look like something going forward. So the language where it says that the parties have agreed that the property was in need of improvements, consisting of, and it goes through it, and that I would like to say that the city contracted with, and that the paving was completed as of June 6th, 2025. I just want to make sure that we reflect what accurately happened in this particular, what's already happened.
If Maxine is fine with that, we're fine with that, we often grant our funding after that. So again, happy to see the improvements to the lot, we think the mayor and his team are getting on, it's safe. It even has more parking spaces now, the way he striped it, so again, nice improvement to the downtown.
Again, this is really a renewal of the licensing agreement, so that the terms and conditions in this document really don't deviate much from what the existing contract was. So again, that parking lot had deteriorated, there was really a risk assessment for slip and falls, there were potholes, the surface was less than optimal. So we went in, made the adjustment, restrikted, so it actually increased the number of available parking spaces, so both for the public's use and for city employees that park there. And it's an overall good deal, and continues to long-standing relationship to the city as with Metroplex.
I agree with that 100%. I just want to make sure that it reflects that, what it's referring to here, that this work has, it's already been done. So yes, Metroplex, I appreciate all the work they do in terms of our parking spaces. I just want to make sure that we're reflecting that, that what we're accepting this grant money for is for work that's already been done. So I just wanted that to be reflected in our agreement, and not going forward. That's my own question, or comments?
Anyone else?
And the only question I had was just the total cost of the paving project, which I imagine you do not have, Mr. Hogan Camp.
Yeah, that's just a portion of the lots that we control and have to get rid of. We also just paid for the striding, we had already previously studied the lot through the ongoing relationship, so we're happy to make another closing group.
But the question was just the total cost of that paving project?
I believe thirty-eight thousand.
Thank you.
Is that likely to deviate from that a little bit?
Any comments, questions, or anything else?
There's just one thing, Mr. Hogan Camp and I spoke earlier, that the very last sentence where it said the approximate cost of the striding estimated to be, we know what the cost is, so just that this document would just reflect the actual cost.
Three thousand, two hundred fifty-four dollars.
Thank you. Okay, I'm looking for comments or questions around that. I'm taking a motion to move that forward. So.
I'll second the necessary corrections.
All in favor?
Aye.
Second agenda item is a follow-up discussion around good fall position. So we've had multiple conversations with multiple residents, as well as landlords here in the city, sent over some information for the council and sure that we've all done our homework and looked at, through this thoroughly around how this would impact our community. And at this point, I'd like to bring the court over to both the side committee and the board of the council. Any comments or questions on that?
Mr. Chairman, if I could just speak. Just as a, as a full legislation, based on the comments from the last committee meeting, a draft of the law number one was presented to the council. There's a section three in there that says purpose and intent. That's a compilation of purposes and intents from other localities. The council here is free to put in its own purpose and intent and findings in that particular section. The local law process, like I outlined the last time I was before you, is a bit different from the universe. The mandatory public hearings before the mayor, the chief executive officer, veto power. You have the option to have a public hearing, if so, portion. If this piece of legislation is, if this law draft, if this local law voted out committee, has to be firm formally introduced in the next session of the city council, which is next Monday night. And at that point, it's formally introduced, it has what they refer to as lay on the table for seven days. Another word, you can't act on it, it only sits for seven days, which would, obviously, your next council meeting, two weeks after that, would mean that you could go on it at the next session, at the end of the month, if you get something, what, the 28th of July? 28th of July, so. And then once the council, if it's voted, by the council out, and then it goes to the mayor. The mayor then has ten days, which is scheduled public hearing. That public hearing, his public hearing, has to be within 20 days of him getting the legislation that was passed by the council. Legislation, the mayor's public hearing has to be on five days' notice. Then after the mayor has his public hearing, then he either signs it, vetoes it, means veto, it comes back to the council, and it's a two-thirds majority to override the veto. And that override has, that action has to be done within 30 days of the mayor returning the action to you. That's a overview of the whole process.
Yeah.
And then the actual legislation itself, there's two options, which, if you're opting into this, there's two areas whose locality can change the fair market rate benchmark. Under the fair market rate, it's 245%. Other localities have gone above that, some have stayed at that amount. The other is the definition of a small landlord, that is defined as no more than 10 units anywhere in the state of New York. That's what the state legislation calls for, that's the benchmark from the state legislation. A locality can go below that to no more than one unit anywhere in the state. So you can go below that 10 benchmark set by the state. So you go above the 245% of the fair market rate, and then below that 10 units in the state of, sort of the definition is what it is. Those are the two areas the law, the city council has expressed, which they have been able to just to put in. If you don't say anything on it, then it's just going to be what the state legislation says.
Looking around some of the other problems that have popped in, I'm looking to follow suit to define that as one or more. Same way this happened after we adopted that one as well. And then as far as the fair market rate, I believe looking for that to be 345%.
That's what the city's willing to have to stay with.
So that's what I propose.
Okay. So now it's up to the committee, which they want to do, voted out a committee, and they say, hopefully introduce it, it's voted out a committee at the next meeting. And the question, comments?
The mayor, stand up.
Chairman, do you have any research that tells us how many units would be covered in this proposed legislation?
I'm sorry.
How many units would be actually affected?
In the city of Schenectady?
Correct.
No, I don't. I think that this is, this information is important, if it's even 10, 20 homes, which are far more than that. If it was even that, we're talking about 10, 20 homes of families who are now protected from retaliatory convictions and places to live with the families. So it's one of those situations where I think that very small number, even if it was, which are safe. If there's something to do more, it's going to be very true impact. Any other questions, comments?
But I would like to ask the mayor, you raised that concern, if you could just expound on the, why you raised that concern?
Well, just looking at the number of units that we have, because we've actually had a fairly impressive, under here, there's approximately 1,400 units that are governed under the housing authority. And then there's new units that have been built that have some level of income criteria as part of. There's another 1,400 units there. Most of the basic numbers, the target comes 30% of the income. So there's, you know, 2,800 units of property that are there. Some of the, other units since 2012, some of the records show, some of these are rounded up or down a little bit. It's like 2,900 units of housing that we've created. Some is the high end, some is middle income, and some, of course, is more affordable. Just I'm looking to see what the actual impact of this would be, what's the target group? And is there, when people talk to generalities, is there a specific case or cases where people have been put in adverse situations by poor rulings from the court, or from poor actions from landlords? And I haven't seen any of that in the narrative that's been put out there.
So, Mr. Mayor, are you suggesting that people living in the city of Schenectady have not, and are not living under the conditions, suffer from retaliatory convictions, and so part of that, are you saying, or is that trying to clarify?
See, I haven't been given examples. And what I think the more significant thing that we've moved forward in the most recent legislative session, which took a period of time to get through, is that an individual of time to get through, is that an individual in the city of Schenectady now, or at some point in the near future, will not be able to start an eviction proceeding unless they have participated in the rental certificate program. So the property has to be inspected, meet the criteria of our rental certificate program. And then it creates protection both for the tenant and for the landlord.
Absolutely. I think that's a great thing. I see that as something that works in alignment with good cause. It's not anywhere near in the opposition. And I don't think that it ever be a yes in here. Both things would be put up if it necessary for people to have a state home to live with the family. So I think a lot of people have reached out and that people, they come to the rail and share some of their own stories, which are also very, I appreciate when people do that, but also, you know, it's hard to hear some of the situations that people have been facing living in the city here. So I, for one certain year, multiple stories. Let's go back and check our last meeting and the one before that. There's some pretty compelling stories. Is there a certain threshold, a percentage of impact, household impact that you would yourself deem that it is worthy effort? Or do you have a certain threshold in your mind that you're thinking, across percentage goes?
I don't. The city of Schenectady's record is really second to none in terms of creating new housing. There's still a shortage, not only in the city of Schenectady, but within the region and across the country. We're starting to see some of the market shift. Some rents, some prices starting to drop because of the post-COVID run-up in real estate values. So again, how do we manage it going forward, creating opportunities across the board, and creating a diverse, good, middle-class city that we're all proud of?
Yeah. Well, I would say this is a part of doing it. Schenectady County is, of course, that's this growing county in the state. So being that that's the case now, so I would say we might even be a little late, kind of to your point around how good we are with building housing here in the city.
Well, the record has been quite clear. Some of the public narrative has been contrary to the facts.
Yeah, I'm only speaking on the record. I'm actually using what you're saying to say, I, I agree with you that that's a list of, we're doing some good work in. And that's why it's really important that as that work is done, it's done in a responsive way, that makes sure that we have the adequate protections for residents that live here.
Any other questions, comments?
I wouldn't contend with the record of the city, but I would say we're changing aspects of living conditions within the city that aren't necessarily felt by a certain population in the city. The question that I would ask is, is that changed? And I would say if we have to search for how those benefiting community members, and if we continue to hear, and I'll speak of myself, there was recently a housing forum hosted by one Schenectady, and I'm going to pause in the respect for that conversation I was held a few nights ago, and wanted them to present that to the council, I imagine next Monday, I would hope, if they're listening in a proper format. But at the one table that I was at, which reflected maybe a dozen tables, I know some of its consumers were present, it was a resounding narrative of the issues and conditions that people are presenting with respect to renting, one of which is, I'm afraid to speak up about maintenance issues and concerns because of the fear of my lease not being renewed and because of the fear of being highlighted as an aggressor and then being, my rent's being jeopardized. And as we continue to receive these narrative pieces in opposition to good cause eviction, I continue to present myself as an objective thinker. And I continue to see inaccuracies. And I would ask that if anyone around the table feels differently or feels that the, the ownership conditions of a landlord would be affected, I would ask for you to show me that in the legislation. Show me that in the legislation, because I've read it multiple times and I see the counter. I, I see that this still allows for rent increases. I see that this still allows for response to individuals that are not taking care of the property. I see there are protections in place for improper behavior. And I worry at federal changes and how they impact our community. And we know our demographic of residents. It is responsive of us to consider to present options. And as we entertain the conversation of rent stabilization for all of two seconds, with respect to the knee-jerk reaction that we've heard from slick neighborhoods that have landlords, I, I find it deingly offensive that we do not support landlords because that conversation was not further pushed. And, and despite of us continuing that narrative, we have only heard of the comment that the problem at hand has gotten worse. We only hear of more people dealing with this. And even if it is one or two at the council table, that is more than what I've experienced frequently. And again, at every event, there's always an organization that is polling what issues matter most to you in the city of Schenectady. And housing continues to be the number one focus. So I would ask, what are we changing? And is it enough? And truly, the changes that are proposed, that are proposed in good cause eviction, do those resoundly impact landlords to the degree that we are recognizing and seeing day in and day out?
Just following, understanding your narrative, agree with it. The issue with landlords who, I don't understand some of their business models. I've told some of them that before they don't do business in the city of Schenectady, is those properties are not part of the rental certificate program.
Thank you, sir. So those properties, you know, I've had the pleasure of speaking with multiple landlords, and I continue to do that. And something that has been 100% consistent in every single conversation that I've had, is when I pull up the actual protections and I intentionally gone down line by line, the landlords will say, is this something that you would ever do? Have you ever done anything like this? Mr. Williams was present for one conversation, and it was a resounding note to every single point. So I think that we have some landlords who are operating in good faith, providing people with safe and affordable housing. And as the market shifts and rents start to increase, we have landlords who are making considerations and decisions based on the people that are living in the properties that they own. And I commend that and appreciate that, as I'm sure your tenants do. And if everyone acted, if all landlords acted and consisted with that way of doing business, the call would not even be something that we have to have a conversation about. Because most of the landlords that I spoke to all operate under these principles right now, rather organically. However, there's a good portion of landlords that don't. And to talk about this in a way of narratives, I mean, narratives are narratives. We're talking about real people's lives, the real families' lives who have been, you know, completely disrupted. And there are plenty of negative byproducts of someone having to experience some of the things that good cause is here to prevent. And so it's, that's the reason why it's important that we do this.
So, any other questions, comments, questions?
So I've read through the legislation as well. And as was already stated, if a landlord's already abiding by, I was actually speaking to a landlord yesterday, and I said to them, you sound like you're already doing all these things. So I'm not sure why, and that person, that landlord is actually not in favor of it, but they talked about some future thing that may happen. And mayor, I do agree that we are building up, we're putting in new housing, et cetera. But this may or may not impact that. So, and I just got the sense that if we, there's some thought process that if we do this, it somehow makes the city look like we're, you know, puts a black eye on the city because of all the development that we're doing. And I don't think it necessarily does. And I also believe that the legislation that just passed with the state, also this really can support that. Because then even if they get rental certificates, and then now they're complying, and then that particular landlord who wasn't being a good landlord to begin with, then begins to raise those rents in a way that makes their tenant move. So I think that they actually complement each other as opposed to needing one or the other.
I would agree. And I would also just add that, Victor, you know, when we're talking about people's livelihoods, I'm far less concerned about the optics as I am around the very material conditions of poverty that we're living. And I think that that's the place that, you know, we should be making our decisions from, as this is going to happen. Any other questions or concerns around this?
Chairman, just a, just a further clarification. So it's going to be, the proposed legislation will be 345% of the fair market rate. And then the definition of small landlord would be not more than one unit square of the state of New York. And then regarding the legislation, findings and intent, did you wish to amend?
Sorry, I didn't hear.
Findings and intent, do you wish to add to what's, it's in the draft or anything to work? And that's in the findings of section two, finding, there.
Did you want to add anything to section two, is he saying?
No, no, no. Okay. Does the, does the, does the council wish to have a public, as I indicated before, a public hearing is not required for the council to act on this. A public hearing is done by the mayor in the local law process. You also have that option to call for a public hearing. Do you wish to do that? Or you just want to throw out the legislation as, as indicated here tonight, formally introduced at Monday's session. And then lay on the tables for two weeks, and then action will be on the 28th of July.
I was gonna, I think with the, the impact that this has on our community, there needs to be an additional intentional focus on hearing from all people and wherever they supply this issue. So I think it is our responsibility to, to host the public.
So, anything?
You'll have, you know, the option of public hearing by the council, as I indicated before, mandatory public hearing by the mayor. So it would be two, two pieces of legislation put out here. One, the proposed local law that will be introduced on Monday night, and the resolution coming for the public hearing on July 28th. Proposed local law number one.
I just need some clarity. If we're having a public hearing, what, how are we voting it out, same night?
Well, it's introduced on Monday night. It's formally introduced.
Yes, indeed.
You can't take any action on it for seven days. It has to lay on the table, as they say. So you can't do it. It's formally introduced, it will say introduced, introduction only on Monday night. And then the resolution will be the public hearing, the public hearing on the 28th. And then the 28th, the public hearing. And if you so wish to vote for it on that night, you may do so, or push it off, it will be your date. And just on the effective date, just, you know, the last section of the system, usually we do effective dates on a date or effective immediately. Because this is a local law, it doesn't become effective until all the actions are done and it's filed through the secretary of the state's, the hearing secretary of state's office. That's the effective date. So if it passes and then gets filed, the law gets filed with the secretary of state, that date, that's the effective date. So it has no firm date, because we don't know on that date.
Right. So I make the motion that we actually call for a public hearing and then introduce the legislation.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else to come before government operations? I'll settle. Motion to adjourn?
So, I'd like to call to order city development and planning. We have eight items on the agenda. The first item is authorize the mayor or his designee to enter in a supplemental agreement number one with New York State Department of Transportation for the Crane Street Bridge rehabilitation over CSX Amtrak City of Schenectady. Mr. Wall?
Thank you. As you may be aware, we are in the preliminary design stages for a new Crane Street Bridge. This is a federally funded project through the tip. We are working with the railroad. And in doing the railroad review, their fees have increased for some of the review. We went to the DOT for the increase, and they've issued us this supplemental agreement to cover the increase in railroad fees. So these railroad fees are, through the project, paid for by the consultant, but reimbursed through the project.
Oh, okay. All right. So they're reimbursed, they're reimbursable?
Yep.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
All those.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Item number two, 2025 Gulf Budget Amendment Number Two.
So this is amendment number two, as you recall. A couple months ago, I was here in front of you for amendment number one. As you know, this year, we've been doing a lot of capital improvements at the golf course. The majority of the capital improvements were not in the approved 2025 budget. The reason being is going into 2025 at the time of the budget, which is September, October, we did not have our restaurant operator under contract. With them under contract, we did a lot of capital improvements to the course. We took that funding and we used it all to reimburse the golf course for the work. However, in doing so, we had more additional costs come up. I've outlined the three principal costs here. And these costs are a little too large for the operating budget to bear. We have, you know, taken a lot of costs already. But this Albany Fire Protection Systems, $23,000. That is for our main valve system, for our sprinkler system. Needed to be replaced after we had the fire system go off. It's having a hard time maintaining pressure. So we needed to do this repair. A pond aerator, that is essentially a fountain. Ours broke, had some issues on holes. It's a 2316, it's our large pond fountain. Typically, I would not come to the council to ask just for this, but since I'm coming to ask for these two other items, I thought if we could get it now, it does help with the life of the pond. And then we have a 15-year-old convection oven. It is a Vulcan commercial-grade convection oven. We put some money into it to repair it. However, those repairs did not work. And before we put too much money into a 15-year-old oven, we thought we would stop, regroup, and purchase a new oven. In the contract, the city does supply the major kitchen appliances. Those are ours at home. We have a walk-in cooler, we have some fryers, we have an oven, and some commercial-grade refrigerators.
Chris, how old is that oven?
It was about 15, yeah, 15, 20 years old. Yes, it's very similar to the one that we just put it in. Music oven, actually. Very large, single Vulcan oven. And we're making do with smaller conventional ovens around. But this has been a major inconvenience for the restaurant operator. And it's no, no fault of anyone's. We thought it was repairable until we started going down the road with a technician, and it was just one thing after another to be replaced. It became a money thing. We didn't want to do that.
And Mr. Wall, you said that the money is already in the, the Gulf budget, so?
Our reserves are solid.
It's in the reserve, but it hasn't.
Right. But just, just making clear that it's not coming out of general budget.
No, this is coming out of the golf course reserves. But, you know, it's one of the things, I'll just, I'll just broach the topic of, we did, I did discuss it with the mayor and the finance commissioner about somehow the purchasing policy maybe having a little leeway for the golf course fund to be able to, up to a certain percent, if things like this occur. So we're not back. However, that's up to the council. Right now, there's no avenue for me to have an issue like this and need to purchase something capital out of budget, out of what was my approved budget without coming back here. So it's six, one half dozen the other. But, you know, like, for instance, with change orders on a contract, there are ways that up to 25%, the mayor can sign off on them without the council approval. And over that percent, we have to come to the council. So something like that in the purchasing policy might be efficient from a future share standpoint. But I like seeing you, I see you all the time.
Chairman, I didn't expect to come back with these requests, but we've done everything. The valve was off, the oven, it's just beyond repair. So we're back to just make sure we're doing it right, supporting the operation.
Oh, absolutely. I agree. But I, I think it's important, though, because we hear a lot of talk about what's going on at the golf course and people questioning. So I think it's important that we have that, you know, public conversation, let people know exactly why that we're doing it. We're not just replacing an oven that we bought two years ago because a newer model came out. But that, you know, we're doing it because it's an absolute need. So, yes, Mr. Williams.
Is there a value to that oven? I know there are other organizations in the city that is something that is just too much investment to rent.
We, everything that comes out of that golf course, our stools, old bar top, everything goes to auction. We've had inquiries for a number of things that were in there prior. We've had inquiries for a number of things that were in there prior, and they all have gone through financially auctions.
Do you have any suggestions, Mr. Williams, please?
I said...
Do you want?
You know, I'm wearing my, I'm wearing my beauty shirt. You all know we're very into beauty, but I just, I encourage you all to talk to someone who's played there. I've had two people reach out to me in the last two days. We held our first July 4th scramble event, which was run by the new restaurant, and heard really great things about that. And I think the vibe at the golf course now is just, it's very positive. Everybody's really enjoying it between the new irrigation system and the renovations that we've made in the condition of the course. I think we're really making a great strike.
Any other questions or comments?
I'll move on.
A second.
No, it's fine.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Wall.
I have one more.
Okay. Yes, you do. Oh, thank you. The discussion, item number three, discussion on implementation of traffic calming procedures.
Back again with this, and this won't be the last time I come back with it, because I'm not looking for an action. So this has been an ongoing request to me by members of the public, and I'm sure that as council, you've heard, people reach out to you as well. What I wanted to share with you and just get some opinions on is, this might be opening a can of worms, and it might be just what we have to do, is we're getting a lot of requests for not only traffic calming devices, such as those speed tables, but for other things such as need to look into one-way streets and other, other smaller, other smaller things, like not only the four-way stops, find mini roundabouts, all these things. So I talked with Mr. O'Brien about how we could implement that. The city code does not have a process for one-way streets. The city code just says that there is a table. There is not a designation that says, you know, we would have to do a call for public hearing to amend the table, but there's not a process. So what we discussed was, and I provided you with the amendment, was amending the speed pump procedures to a more generic traffic calming procedures, so that if a neighborhood or street felt that they needed something for traffic calming, that we could look into measures, one of which could be a one-way street. I'm not opposed to it. We have not done it much in my tenure as city engineer, but I don't want to put people off and just say no. But also, in certain cases, I'm only hearing from a few people. And we really don't want to make changes such as these, only hearing from a few people, even if those people are very loud. So that's what I have proposed. The other thing that I'm going to be proposing is, and that's going to be how this ties to the budget. I have some smaller consultants that may be able to do something that's similar to King's Road, when we wanted to do a traffic study there. But there has to be some correlation between studies, traffic, you know, I'm working right now with Lieutenant Dalton and Brian Cannon and trying to utilize our technology and things for traffic counts. But there are warrants and certain things we have to meet, and I don't have the capacity to do that. So I am going to be possibly putting some things in the budget for fees for, you know, traffic studies, engineering studies outside. You know, I know we had talked about the parking studies, things like that. But there has to be a little back with that, you know, it has to be, if we want to do more, we have to fund what we want to do, because I don't have the capacity to do all of that. And so I don't know if it ends up being, if we'll try to do, you know, five a year. I mean, sidewalk program, we don't get as many requests as we thought we would because we have these measures in place. So I think if we have these measures in place, and you have to get 50%, 75%, it will kind of slow down how many we get, so it might not be a problem at all. But that's why this is a discussion.
Thank you, Madam President. Just to follow up on what Mr. Wall said, you know, earlier, you know, last fall, you passed the ordinance calling for traffic calming devices and regulatory process that the city engineer will be involved in. I believe putting traffic calming devices, because the language is not limited to, it's broad enough, and I'm reading it broadly enough for you, to include all traffic control calming devices. We didn't limit to, this way, the city engineer has a mandate which to take these requests, petitions, and then process them. Now, regarding speed tables, just an example, cities like Phoenix, Arizona, Thornton, Oregon, Rochester, yes, they all have petitions, various numbers of what's amount, but each one of the petition process requires a traffic study to be done. Every city that's doing this is part of the process, yes, you have a petition, bring it to the engineer's attention. Every one of them requires that a traffic study be done, and a traffic study supports the implementation of traffic control devices. So that's, that's the big picture. So I think this is in keeping with your intent and in keeping with what the standard is nationwide, of having that study supporting the requests.
And then one thing, because as I've been going through this, that I just wanted to point out is that, a little bit unlike speed controls such as the humps, and I'll focus on Front Street, because that's what it is, is that typically, this is how, I don't know how I would do this, but I think I would just highlight a map and then send that out with a petition. The changing of Front Street to one-way would affect River Street, Jefferson Street, Monroe. It would have an impact on those residents. I know the stockade would say, yes, they would as well. I don't want to go too far into it, but usually we require just those immediately. But if your only way out of River Street is Front Street, then it would probably be nice if you had a say on what they did on Front Street, even if you don't front Front Street, because that's your only way out. Similarly, if you are on a one-way going off of it, and now your only one way is, I have to come down, and I can only go right, I used to go left, and that's where I'm battling too, is because for sidewalk petitions, you don't go to neighbors, you wouldn't go to adjacent street. And that's also in the speed, and in one of the comments in the speed control, that's there, like we talked about before, if the street I grew up on, Ardsley, put speed humps, and you deflect the traffic to Waverly and Phoenix, would you want to hear from all three parallel streets? And that's, like I said, it's a discussion because it's also kind of a riddle. I know, how do we go forward? Other municipalities are doing it, and I appreciate doing this, but it is also going to be a little bumpy.
No pun intended.
Oh, yeah, I did think about that. Thank you.
Mr. O'Brien.
I'll work with Mr. Wall to, you know, look at the regs, what other localities are doing, and then pursuant to the city ordinance, once the city engineer compiles those regs, it's on notice to you for implementation.
And I will state that a lot of the feedback that we're getting, especially from the stockade, is based around the fact that there's so much more development that's starting to happen in that neighborhood, and therefore, it's impacting their quality of life, essentially is what I'm going to say. So I understand that we have to do the studies, I understand that, you know, it's going to change how people drive. I think that we have to take all that into consideration as we do development. We have to consider how it's impacting the people who reside there as we, as we do these developments. And so that's why I know we're hearing a lot from Front Street, and if we're doing a traffic study, should it, it needs to really include how it's impacting residents, not just how many cars, and I think that's important as well. And does that mean we have to change other street directions? I hope not, but is that, would that be part of it?
Just to follow up, I think, Madam President, I think the reason why they did, because these devices change the traffic direction, some are traffic calming devices, like a speed hump, could be expensive. So the idea is that it's justified, it's supportable, in that, in that, once it's in, it's in.
Yes.
And in some, in some cities, they have a position where if it's taken out, if there's now a petition to take it out, the city engineer has the authority to say, no, you know, we're leaving it in. We're leaving it in because, you know, for traffic purposes. And then if it is taken out, that neighborhood cannot submit a petition for two years afterwards. So the idea is, this is a time, time expense, it is a physical expense of changing things, and monetary, you know, there's expenses in putting these things, these devices in. So it's recognizing that, hey, there's consequences. And the engineer, ultimately, as the new traffic engineer, has the best determination and has the public safety. So that's where the traffic studies come in, is the picture.
And I think, I think that's good information, and it's also good information for the people who are advocating for this to know, these are the implications, and this is what could possibly happen. It's like, you change your mind next year, you may not, it won't change.
And why I don't want to marginalize the people who have contacted, to Mr. O'Brien's point, these are large changes, and I hear from few people, but everyone knows the people, they are, you know, squeaky wheel. But at the same point, to make these large changes based off of that, you know, if there was a petition of 75% of the residents, even before the process that came, you would go, okay, this is clearly something that the street would like. However, it hasn't happened that way yet, but I don't know if it's because there isn't a process in place. So really, the discussion is, are you okay with amending my process to include one-way streets and other means that I would designate? I'm going through right now, just to let you know, I've already reached out to City of Albany, had a conversation with them. I'm working with the MPO, and they're reviewing the process itself. You know, this is something that is both done in other areas, but is new to us, so I want to make sure it's fit to us correctly. So when I have their comments back, I'll be coming more with the official draft that's going to be voted on, and when it's official, it's official. I don't know if we want to go down the road of 75% for speed humps, 50% for one-way, or if it's just 75 across the board, or 50% across the board. I mean, because that is going to matter, same thing with one-way. I think it's important to get, if there are streets that rely on that one-way to go there, that we capture that in a petition, and we don't capture that possibly in other, other ways. I just think that's fair. So that's what I wanted to bring forward, because I know specifically in the last week, there's been a lot of emails about requests for things.
Mr. Williams.
I wanted to add, and I thought it was a key reference to Mr. Mudd's point earlier, where he spoke about how previous petitions couldn't account for beyond homeowners, so we're going to incorporate tenants, which we do have a very large tenant population. So I want to make sure that this doesn't adversely leave out voices within communities. But I'm glad you mentioned that last point, and I'm glad you continue to reference it, which is like your food book. I think your department is not unique in that being asked to do more of us is something that I knew all throughout my military career. I think it's something that a lot of us recognize in our civic or other duties and hats that we juggle. But sincerely, since I've been on the council, the requests for your department specifically have only increased astronomically, and that's due to the need to be responsive to e-bikes and make sure we have considerations, to be more biker friendly, to make sure that we have safe and streets that are responsive to the changing conditions of motor vehicle is. And again, you've done nothing but just continue to respond. But these are the types of conversations I'm asking people around the table, it's a snapshot, because as we enter our budget year, I think there needs to be some hyperfocuses on these types of areas, if not to magnify what can come out of your department, but making sure that, I think some of the misnomer is, if you use the external budget, that means you can kind of just put it absent your thought, and then know that another organization is working on that issue also. I would say you are now having to replicate yourself to follow what they're doing, and also still work your items, prevent me from wrong, but it, I would say that that makes it more complicated and challenging. I appreciate you for staying here. But sincerely, the needs of the department to respond to the request, this is going to be something that is not shorting. And we had our cases of issues that we've been responding to at the table. But sincerely, I think this is going to be an interesting budget season, where we have to make sure we're intentionally making certain investments as we consider taking ones away.
Mr. Farley.
Do you have, like, vacancies in your department right now?
I have one right now.
What is that?
Assistant city engineer, assistant to the city engineer. My, the assistant to the city engineer retired 60 days ago. And we have posted it, we have gotten some early names, but not, not tech, not enough technical construction background. You know, one of the things that I can, we can go through in the budget process, but that Mr. Williams is aware of, is that, you know, the split of the city engineers, one of the things that you see with the Crane Street is that, like, while we're doing the operations, and this is operations, this is, you know, the day-to-day, trying to make sure the wheels run, the Department of Engineering right now is managing $40 million worth of active construction. So all that active construction in the summertime is funneled through myself. And that's where the draw gets, you know, pulled away from, to Crane Street, Craig Street, Franklin Street, paving programs, all those programs, DRI programs, and I could go on and on with the programs. And so that's where we're trying to keep the wheels going with construction, and then keep the operations going at this end. And it is difficult. So having that construction background, most times when I have someone that comes in, I put them right into the construction role to try to get projects, so that I don't have to have such a hands-on approach. But it is, it is difficult, but everyone is in the industry is searching for people. So it is, it is difficult.
So why is the big bucks?
What's that?
That's why you get the big bucks as well.
Yeah.
All right.
Okay, so...
So this is just, we'll just be hearing more about it?
Sure. If no one has any objections moving forward in this way, because it's a change from what I last presented, then I'm going to work with Mr. O'Brien, and we're going to develop this in the MPO. They're already, I've already sent them all the backup. I think, I mean, we really have a good foundation. It's just, and I think we'll have to tweak it as we go, because I'm sure as we go forward and actually implement it, people will throw a curveball, then I'm going to have to go, okay, you know, but I think at least this gives us a basis when the public even comes to a council person and says, I want to do this. We have a process in place to say, here, follow this, work with me, and now I know that we're going forward. I think that's, that's better.
So you'll be working in also with the proportion of the council's office, too?
Yes, yes, that's, that's moving forward.
Any other comments, concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wall. The next item on our agenda, item number four, is review of an ordinance to amend Article Seven Trucks, section, trucks, section 248-85 of the Schenectady City Code to exclude trucks, tractors, and tractor-trailer combinations over eight tons on King's Road from Albany Street to the city line. Public hearing was held on June 23rd, 2025. Any further comments or discussion around this item? I, and I need a motion to move? Do I need a motion to move this forward? No?
Yes, we'll be on for the vote.
Yes.
For you to vote on Monday night.
I beg your pardon?
For you to vote on Monday night.
Right.
Because you have the public hearings.
Yes. All those in favor? All right. The next item is a ceremonial resolution for the March for Jesus. This year is their 20th anniversary, and on July 26th, I believe it is. And so just wanted to recognize, I think that we're all familiar with the March for Jesus and what they've done over the years and what they continue to do. There's a legislative request in here, just kind of outlining it, so just asking the council to pass a resolution recognizing their anniversary.
So...
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
All right, the final three items are for property sales, and so those will be held in executive session. So I need a motion to recess, please.
Second.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We are recessed.
I'd like to call to order the Plains Committee. We have three items on the agenda tonight, all of which will be held in executive session. So I have a motion to enter executive session. Second.
Second.
Alls in favor? All right, we are in executive session.
Members of the public will have to leave.